It's time to call to order our city council meeting for August 3rd. I'd like to welcome everybody that is attending via Zoom. We have city council sitting on the stand, on the dais, staff is in the audience. I just want to clarify that we are not wearing our masks for two reasons. One is because we are being broadcast and that is an exception. And number two, we also have, I'm a member of city council that's hearing impaired, and that's also an exception that's made to the mask wearing, but we are all social distanced. Let's go ahead and have roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Hockes.
Here.
Councilmember Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith, absent. Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here. And we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, council members. It doesn't look like we have any citizens request to speak to council on anything that's not on our agenda, so we'll move ahead to council member announcements. Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
And I do have one tonight that I remembered that I need to make, which is, we have a general government meeting this Wednesday at 5:00 PM. The topics are going to be a sales tax collection discussion and the US-50 pedestrian crossing design concept.
Thank you. And councilmember Meisner.
I just want to take a second to thank Irma Davis for her services. I know she had the opportunity to work with the county during a very challenging time, and I wish her the best of luck.
Thank you. Councilmember Meisner. Any other announcements from council? Councilman Hockes.
Yeah, I want to piggyback on Mr. Meisner's deal. Had the pleasure of having her as my neighbor. Wonderful person, and her husband, they're both involved with taking care of this city, this county, and everything else. And so, we were heartbroken to see him leave, and I'm glad that she got a position where she's going, just basically a little bit even higher than the one she had here, being in charge of two counties. Her husband is ICU RN and that, and we wished him all the best of luck. We almost boycotted him from leaving the neighborhood, but we're going to miss him, both of them.
We are grateful that we have, as a county, been able to fare the COVID-19 virus pretty well during these last few months, and keeping my fingers crossed that we can continue to do so. I know we're crossing a very thin line right now, and just really want to encourage everybody to continue to wear their masks, social distance, and wash your hands frequently. That is the magic recipe right now to being able to coexist with COVID and have a normal life as much as possible. My announcement is that we do have a Facebook Live with the mayor on Thursday at 4:00 PM. That will be via Zoom with Ryan Stevens. I'd welcome any council member who'd like to join us. We'd be happy to have you with us as well, and any topics that you would like to talk We do have a proclamation, and this is for the National Health Center Week on August 9th through the 15th for 2020. And do we have someone on Zoom to address us from Valleywide?
Hannah Wagner, Cellar, 15.
Is Tana on one of our attendees? There we go. I'd like to, before I read the proclamation, I'd like to invite Tana to address council, if you may.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you all for having me today. We're really excited about National Health Center Week, which is the second week of August. National Health Center Week is a great week for us to celebrate community health centers such as Valleywide Health Systems. It's also been an honor and a privilege to have a big new beautiful clinic in downtown Canyon City. We are excited to continue to grow our services with the community and to continue serving people via services, medical, dental, behavioral health, pharmacy, and other ancillary services like case management, and really connecting our community members to the services that they need. And then, of course, moving forward, we're really excited to be opening a school-based health center in partnership with the school district and Sylvista Health. And if anyone has any questions about community health centers in general or Valleywide, I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you so much.
Are there any questions from council? Okay. Thank you, Tana, for being here to represent the health and centers throughout Colorado, but especially here in Fremont County and Canyon City, and we are excited and grateful to have those services provided to our kids as well locally. I'll just read a part of the proclamation. Whereas, for over 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary and preventative health care in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's health care system. Whereas, community health centers are a critical element of the health system, serving both rural and urban communities, and often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary care in their communities. Nationwide, community health centers serve one in every five residents of rural areas. Whereas, community health centers are locally owned and operated, small businesses that serve as critical economic engines, helping to power local economies by generating $54.6 billion in economic activity in some of the country's most economically deprived communities. Whereas, community health centers nationally employ more than 236,000 people, including physicians, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, and certified nurse midwives, who work as part of a multidisciplinary clinical teams designed to treat the whole patient. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that I, Ashley Smith, Canyon City Mayor, do hereby proclaim August 9th through 15th, 2020, as National Health Center Week, dated this third day of August 2020. Congratulations, Tana, and again, thank you for the services that are provided to our community, especially in rural Colorado.
Thank you.
I will now proceed to the consent agenda. I'll turn the time over to Administrator Stevens.
All right, thank you. Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is the approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting on July 20th and the special city council meeting also on July 20th. 8B is to approve the stormwater field supervisor job description. 8C approves the city administrator to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Fremont County Clerk and Recorder for the November 3rd general election. 8D authorizes the mayor to sign a water service contract for 1205 South 12th Street. 8E authorizes the mayor to sign a lease with Children's Advocacy Center in the amount of $1. That $1 is for the 2021 year. 2022 is at $1,500 a month. 8F is to receive and file a list of bills.
Councilmember Meisner.
I see we have more wayfinding expenses. So, can you at least describe what's going on there? With Hilton displays, who's that?
Yeah, that's one of the contractors. Those are the final bills coming in from the wayfinding. So, even though the project has been completed, we're still receiving the final invoices.
And Hilton is the people that finished it, or the people that started it?
Hilton was one of the contractors that was doing installation.
Hilton, I thought it was.
Hilton.
And they're looking really good. We get a ton of compliments on those all the time.
In fact, can I say something? I was driving back into town the other day, and there was a family taking a photo out in front of the one on the east end of town. You can tell they were visitors, so that was nice. Nice to see.
That's great.
Yeah.
Did they have a little visitor thing kind of around there?
Nobody did have a strap around his camera, so that he wouldn't drop it as he was touring.
And we did have our Blossom Royalty on the west side do their official pictures, and I loved seeing that, too. It's a great photo op. Councilmember Meisner, again.
I see on the unbridled holdings, the downtown life safety grant. Is that a reimbursement, or is that prepayment?
It's reimbursement.
I do, I thought I saw Lori Jenkins is on. Lori, do you want to address city council about item number E, and that's the Children's Advocacy Center rent for 2021?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone on city council for, one, approving that request last year. We are requesting that again this year. Due to COVID and obviously unexpected consequences of COVID, we have canceled every one of our fundraisers, and based on the information we're being provided, most likely our fundraisers may not take place again next year, and that is a huge hit to the CAC, trying to bring in those general funds and take care of some of our operating expenses. We are up, as of last month, we are up by 15% over this time last year in cases. Those cases are not cases that I would attribute to necessarily COVID-related. I think those cases are going to hit us probably in August, September, October, when our kiddos go back to school. So, we anticipate that we will be seeing a large increase over the next six months of cases coming into the CAC. Currently, we have provided services to 175 families and children, or I should say, children and their family members, just since January, and that includes 65 interviews. We had 91 all of last year, and we already have 65 this year. So, we appreciate the support that the city has given us. We also appreciate the support that the entire community has given us through all of this. We did not ever shut down. We have been abiding by COVID regulations with masks and six feet distancing only one family in at a time, and we did that on purpose because we needed to make sure that we were staying open for our families and our children, and so I'm proud to say that we have not ever closed.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Lori Jenkins? Councilmember Gonzalez.
I don't have a question. I have more of a comment. I'm just, I'm pleased that we're in a position to where we're able to help this organization. I think it's super important that we keep them open and working within our community, and I just want to say that I'm very pleased that we're able to extend this lease option for them.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez. If there's any other comments, then I'd like to entertain a motion and a second for the agenda and the consent agenda. Councilmember Gonzalez.
I make a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you.
There's been a motion and a second, and any discussion? I'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
All right, it has passed. We will now have the city administrators' report.
Yeah, thank you again, mayor and council. So, we've got several things going on. The Parks Department installed this past, about a week or so ago, some stations for personal flotation devices, a loner station essentially for those who are going into the river. We're really encouraging that river safety, and we have partnered with Colorado Parks and Wildlife, as well as the Rec District, to not only put one at Centennial Park, but also over at Reynolds, and then another one at McKenzie. And those were fabricated in-house to try and save as much money as we possibly could. We were offered some that were quite a bit more expensive, but because we did it in-house, we saved quite a bit of money in order to do that. The life vests are being provided by Colorado Parks and Wildlife, and so far, we're about a week into it, and no missing life jackets, so very happy about that. We are currently conducting fire hydrant exercise, testing out pressure, and exercising those fire hydrants. We started south of the river this year, and we'll be moving north of the river, hopefully after some of the construction projects are done, so we don't interfere with any of that. Speaking of the construction projects, you may have seen Ninth Street between Rural Gorge Bridge and Main Streets getting paved today. College Domestic is up as well to be paved this week, and over on Ninth Street also, CDOT is working on replacing and fixing up the railroad crossing over there. That's happening today as well. So, lots of different projects going on. Eighth Street paving is going to start this week as well. A lot of those projects were scheduled to start last week, but because of the rain, we had to delay them, so those are continuing to move forward. See, we have, you know, the building department's working on their ordinances for the building plan code updates. We've received a lot of feedback from contractors and, you know, been answering questions, even though we haven't been able to meet up as a group, so we're trying to address any of their concerns. I think everybody's excited to start moving forward with this, and we'll have that presentation for council at one of the, I believe, the general government meeting in September. So, you'll get an update there, and you'll see the proposed ordinance and what was taken out of the code and what's still in the code and those types of activities. I think everything else on here, streets, fleets, and facilities, they've been demoing vac trucks. The last demo is currently scheduled for August 12th. Once we've done that demo, we'll be working on trying to figure out which of the four or five demos is going to be the best fit for the city, and we'll work on bringing that order to city council for approval. Tonight, you just approved the job description for that position, or for that truck, and we'll time the hiring of that position with when that truck is going to arrive, so. And then finally, behind the city administrator report is an update on code enforcement that Councilman Hockes asked for. That has a combination of both see, click, fix inquiries, as well as inquiries that came directly from dispatch, and I don't know if you have any questions regarding that, but that is all the information for the first half of the year, sir.
Yes.
Councilmember Hockes.
I appreciate that. One of the things that this list you gave me shows that, and I'm not trying to criticize who's doing whatever they're doing, but it seems to me that we spend more time on complaints from animals than we are on other things that I think are a priority within the town. And the other thing is, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I called you this morning, a little after 8:00, and gave you a complaint that we're having from the neighborhoods surrounding the area of Eighth and Harding. You never got back to me at all, and that's the part that kind of upsets me, because we've got a lot of people down there. Maybe it's not on the main thoroughfare where people can see what's there, but folks, that's a filthy mess in that corner. And the neighbors that are over there, that's why they gave me a call, because it's in my district, but they also gave me a call because, to them, it doesn't speak well of Canyon City and how we're looking at the area we're there. So, I don't know where you're at with that, but you haven't told me, and I can't report back to these people because you haven't said anything to me. And like I say, we shouldn't have to keep the citizens on hold for something as erroneous as what we have over there, okay? And I'm ashamed in the sense that I'm part of this council, and we can't get back to the members of the town, not just because it's our area, but a lot of people drive by that area. That's my main complaint, that. Some areas we can complain about, and things happen right away, because it's on the main focus of where people travel. But if it's off the side where nobody really goes, it seems like we really don't care. But we should care about every part of downtown, the streets of Canyon City and everything else, so maybe a little less focus on dog barking and this and that. We can look at some of the trash stuff that's still roaming this town and that, so we can get something done. And as soon as you can, I would appreciate your feedback as to, so I can go back to these folks in that area and tell them what is anticipated, what's going on, what can be done or can't be done with that corner. So, and if you won't, kid me, drive by Eighth and Harding, folks, you'll be disgusted at what you see.
And I did, you know, have a conversation with interim chief Wagner this morning, and I will get back to you first thing tomorrow morning with a response for you.
Councilmember Meisner.
On, maybe page two of that, it's got a graph on it. Must be three, three or four. It says see, click, fix. I'm not sure I understand those numbers there.
The number followed by the percentage.
Yeah, so the number before the comma is the number of incidents, and the number afterwards is percentage of.
Took me all night to not figure that out.
Councilmember Hammack.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. CDOT is working on reprogramming the lights along 50?
That is true, yes. So, they're working on reprogramming those lights. The current system, they recognize it's not working, so they're working on a solution.
So, when they first put that system in, what council was told was that those were self-programming lights. But then, we also heard that because of traffic flow considerations, that the self-programming would be really, you know, overwritten, or, you know, that taken away. Do we have any idea of what the programming is, what actually they are trying to twiddle?
I can get more information for you. This project is going to take a couple of months. It's not going to happen right away, but we were just informed that they are, they are going to be working on reprogramming those. I think what they're planning on doing is moving to the system they had before, the self-programming lights. It seemed to work better and was more efficient than what we have now.
What is that?
I don't know.
That's fixed intervals.
So...
Everybody wait for the light at the same time.
Well, they can program the intervals. So, what I believe that I heard in some of the meetings I was at with CDOT is that to, you can really only prioritize flow in one direction through town. The other, going the other way is going to suffer, you know, and so right now, I think we have east to west prioritized by them, you know, this is what I believe, and I'm not sure, so, you know, unless you independently verify, don't take me at my word. But I think that that's where we are with the lights right now, and I realize it's, you know, we have very little control or input with CDOT from what I've seen, and, you know, any information you can generate for us would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, as they move further into the project, we'll get more information out to council.
Thank you. Their last study, John, went from east to west, or west to east. Remember when they gave us the breakdown as to how many minutes it took to get from point A to point B? That went from, so I'm not sure what their priority is. I would hope they fix the problem with the backup of traffic up to Home Depot.
Yeah, both McKenzie and Steinmeier, both issues.
Yeah, absolutely. And councilmember Reed.
Ryan, I just had a question on this one, because I couldn't figure out what page it is, so I'm showing you. I think it was the second one. I was just trying to understand on the table, so for the days to acknowledge, is that how long it's taking us to acknowledge these, or is that like what the goal is? Because I was trying to figure out at what point we decide some thing's overdue. I'm just trying to get an understanding of how the flow works.
So, those are the days to acknowledge, and then the days to close is how long it takes to, you know, resolve the issue or have some type of interaction there. So, I would have to check with the police department to see what threshold they're using for overdue.
I was just curious, because at what point we decide that some thing's overdue? Because it looks really good on the far right, then nothing's open and overdue, but I saw that there's 53 still open, so I was just trying to kind of get an understanding of like how the workflow works.
Yeah, I'll get a better understanding of what the overdue timeline is.
Yeah, I don't know about with our current code enforcement. With the past, they'd have, you know, a certain amount of time for compliance, and if they're in the process of complying, they get a little bit more time, and sometimes it has to go to court, that takes time, too. But it would be good to know how the new code enforcement officers are working and what program they're doing. Councilmember Meisner.
I think I'm good. I was on the same page there with, we have some of those categories where it looks like, well, for example, we got weeds, we got 20 created, but only 19 acknowledged. What does that mean? Does that mean like there's one out there that they're not going to?
Yeah, I would have to check and see where that one is missing.
I mean, the difference between created and acknowledged seems a little weird there, that...
Well, the created is typically generated by somebody other than the police department, so it could be the public filling in the system, and it gets created in the see, click, fix system. Acknowledged is when code enforcement acknowledges that there's a new case there.
Right, which suggests by numbers only that code enforcement didn't acknowledge that there was an issue there.
Right.
There is a different explanation, which could be that not enough information was given in the creation of the report to be able to respond to, so there, you know, so more light here would be helpful.
Okay. Yep.
Anything else? Jim?
No.
Okay, councilmember Gonzalez.
So, about a year, a little over a year ago, under the previous administrator, there was a program that was implemented through code enforcement where people would go out and educate the public. Has that just gone by the wayside? Does anybody remember that?
Yeah, there were volunteers.
Yep.
Oh, the...
They had a name for it.
Citizen, it was citizen.
It was a citizen. Yeah, vigilante. Well, what I'm trying to get at is it feels like some of our education prospects in that direction have kind of faltered, so I didn't know if there was some way we could maybe educate through our code enforcement a little bit more. You know, we're in our weedy season, we're, it's hot, it's muggy, people are home more, trash is stacking up, some of our areas are looking a little rough, so is there a way? I guess I'm just asking if there's a way we can revisit something similar.
Yeah, I know, I think it was more than a year, more than about a year and a half ago. It was right around the time when code enforcement went from planning and zoning to the police department.
Police department.
That's about when it went away, from my recollection. So, yeah, we could look at that education program and see how we can repurpose it.
And I'm not looking to bring in, I mean, I don't think that that may have been the best action to bring volunteers and put them in that position, but we do have active people in those positions that can be out educating a little more, rather than writing citations right off the bat, but looking for those, you know, yards and different areas around town like Frank is talking about. You know, if somebody was out there monitoring these things, something like that may not have mounted, so.
We used to have, in those hotspots, we would do those campaigns, or we would bring in a dumpster for a day, and we'd do that education. bring in a dumpster for a day and we'd do that education so everybody could get rid of their, their junk in a good way, instead of dumping it on the roadside or at Phantom Canyon.
Or in the hogbacks.
Yeah, exactly. And so it'd be nice to hear if those are in planning, if we're moving forward on some of that as well.
We can certainly revisit those programs.
And where we're at at the tire, the tire program too, that's another big one. Tires are a big problem.
And televisions.
Yeah, and the televisions. Any other comments on that matter?
Which one?
Code enforcement.
Oh.
Did my button not work? I pushed it.
Then, okay, where we are at, councilmember Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the demo of the vacuum trucks for the stormwater drain cleanouts, the, we, we've had a couple of demonstrations so far, is that right?
We have.
How, how much technology do they have on the truck for, for that, that the operators have to use? I mean, is it, is it, is it all just push lever and the line goes out, or is it computer screens and, and keyboard input, or what?
Some of them have cameras where you can, you know, get a view of the, of the line, so they're a little bit more technical. But yeah, we're, we're evaluating all the different inputs and aspects of, of what it's going to take and, and the technology, the moving pieces, things like that, that could go down from a mechanical and maintenance issue.
And, and the reason I ask the question is because in reviewing, you know, the, the job position for the supervisor, which was fine, I think that was fine, but a further enhancement to that, once we settle on a vacuum truck, might include some words about, you know, tech, technology ability for that particular person. Because if they're operating something that, that ends up being highly technical, there's probably should be something in their job description.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Hockes.
Yeah, Dolly, where that went, you're right, we had that. But that was when code enforcement was separate on its own. And then once they merged and put it with the police department, that program went by the wayside, okay? Which I think that was a, a big mistake on our part, putting the two together, but it was there and it left when they combined code enforcement with the police department.
Councilmember Meisner.
This goes back to the administrative report, and I don't know that I can ask this, but I'll ask it, and then if I'm out of line, shut me down. What's going on with the express? The holiday express? It just seems like the snails are working on it or something.
Yeah, I, I don't know how much of that I can answer. I know that they've, they've had some, they're working on some issues.
Are, are, are code people involved in the process?
We, we have been, yes. It, it's not on the city side, I can tell you that.
Okay, we're not, we're not complicating the situation with moving toilets six inches or something, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
I just have a quick question. Do we know how that life jacket program has gone? Are people using, utilizing them?
They, they are. We've, we've seen people utilizing them and jackets coming in and going out on a regular basis, so it's, it looks like it's being well utilized.
Somebody commented to me about it. I don't remember who it was, but they couldn't believe it was there, that people wouldn't steal them. I said, no, that's not the point.
There, there was one day where two, we couldn't find two and they showed up the next day, so.
Yeah, I've seen them in other communities and there's some level of respect, knowing that this is to save lives for, especially for our kids. Any other comments from city council?
Nope.
All right, then we will move on. I would like to open the public hearing for the new liquor license hotel and restaurant for the Lost Cajun. And Cindy, do you want to give the report on that?
Sure thing. And this started when COVID started, about the same time as the happy endings, and so they got thrown a little bit of a curve for a while, so it took us a while to get all of this in there. With that said, everything is already through the state and approved there, just waiting to hear from you guys. She turned everything in, worked really hard with me to make sure we had everything taken care of, and finally was able to get all of her signatures, which was what took the longest with, with COVID. So she is all good to go on our side.
Excellent. And do we have Debra on Zoom? So, Debra, I'd like to invite you to address city council. We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. What do I need to say?
Well, how about you introduce your business and how things have been going and your intentions with the liquor licensing, and then we will ask you some questions.
Okay. I am Deborah Marchand, and I've opened the Lost Cajun outside of Canyon here, and we have been graciously blessed with the city coming out. They have supported me tremendously. And for the liquor license, I was going to serve beer, box wine, and have the iced margaritas and hurricanes, is what we will be serving here.
All right, yeah. I know my husband and I certainly enjoyed coming. Before we even finished our meal, my husband is already planning his next menu for the next time that we came. He's pretty excited about it.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah. I'd like to invite city council members to ask Debbie some questions about her liquor license. We'll start with councilmember Meisner.
I got some questions, but maybe they're directed at Cindy. But the application that I have has numerous questions that were never answered. Like, did you attend any training? Which she said, no. Describe how you guard against underage drinking purchases? No answer. Describe how you guard against a visually intoxicated customer? No answer. Are you familiar with Colorado liquor code? No. Is there a copy of the liquor code on the establishment? No. And it says, do you acknowledge you or your employees are fully aware of the responsible compliance with Colorado liquor code? And she got no. Do you acknowledge the police department should be contacted in the event of an incident? No. I'm lost.
And that would go to the, I, I don't feel, I mean, I will answer questions for them, but I am not able to fill those out for them, and that would go to Debbie. And I know that we have planned, I've told her that we have training planned, once we can have training again here with Russ, with the Department of Revenue. But that, that goes on the business.
So even though they answer no on all of these questions, they can still come to city council?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it sounds like you have some questions for Debra.
On May 5th, I was not open. I had zero employees. So none of us knew nothing. I mean, I can't answer for any employees what they had, didn't have. Obviously, I guess I would know to call the police department, but for any schooling, I have not, and I was the sole employee May 5th.
So if.
Who's talking?
Go ahead.
Me.
Catherine. So if I can assist council maybe a little bit, so you're looking at two different things really with a new liquor license application. You're looking at the needs and desires of the neighborhood, which can be presented by a petition of the neighbor saying, yes, we want this, this establishment, or witnesses can come and testify to that. And the other thing you're looking at is the good, you know, as long as the person's not prohibited as a licensee and they have good, good moral character. I, I'm not aware that anything came up in the background check or anything like that that would evidence any kind of bad moral character. So you're really looking at what the needs and desires of the neighborhood are, and I don't believe Canyon defines its neighborhood as being like a certain distance from the establishment, so it's in the entire city. So despite the fact she answered no to those questions, they're probably not really relevant as to issuing a liquor license, although you can certainly recommend that training is attended and, and she's up to date on her liquor code knowledge.
So clarify this. So you're telling me the fact that she acknowledges that the Canyon City Police Department doesn't have to be notified, has no bearing on whether she can or cannot be awarded this license?
Correct. That's not part of the criteria for an awarding of a license.
Why put it in there?
I, I understand.
I don't have any questions.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the, I think part of the problem here, if I understand this correctly, is that because of COVID, there have been no training sessions offered, is that correct?
Not the ones that the city does.
Not the, not the ones that the city does. And so, so our applicant here has not been able to attend a, either a city-sponsored or a state-sponsored training course?
I have a statement on about tips training, I'm not sure if I can deal with that at all, but I know. Sorry. I know for the city, we have not been able to schedule and won't be able to schedule until they release the restrictions, because we have too many people that need to come to those trainings, so they don't find it prudent to come down for 10 people. They'll wait until they can get a group of 30 or more. And I know one of the things, when she filled out this paperwork, being a new business owner, not having had a liquor license, she was answering yes with no employees at that point. And I think that might be where some of the confusion is.
Councilmember Hockes.
Her, her leasing deal is solidified completely with the building and all that, but the other stuff that is brought up with all the no's in there, is it possible for us to continue this over and give her back the first portion with explanations that she can come back to us, even though she hasn't had any training with her people? She could come back and say, no, I haven't, but I intend to enroll my people in something in there so that we have an idea of what their intentions are, and then also, this way she can get herself adverse as to what the liquor code law is and everything else so that she's aware also the fact that if she's granted a liquor license, there are various things that can happen, that she can lose that. So I don't know, is it possible that we can do something like that and offer her the excellent opportunity to come back with something?
You can continue the hearing, but I think the issue is, is that the, the application at the city needs to be updated in accordance to what's applicable to a liquor license, and that's the problem, is these questions aren't really relevant to the granting of a liquor license. And so you can continue it and have her come back and provide those explanations, but they're not really part of what you should be considering. What you really should be considering is whether or not this is a, is an establishment that the needs and desires of Canyon, the citizens want, so. And I, I don't have, I don't think I have the full application, so I'm not seeing a petition, a needs and desires petition in there.
There's a petition.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
I'm councilmember Reed. I was just going to suggest to council, since Debbie is right here, and we can just ask her, maybe we could just say, hey Debbie, are you planning when COVID is over now that you have employees, being able to get them the training that the city offers as well as tips training?
Yes, yes, I can.
Fantastic, thank you.
Uh huh.
Councilmember Meisner.
So, so this list of questions, is or is not relevant to an application approval?
That's the line you used to list.
I can't, I don't have that in front of me, so I don't know.
I mean, I'm understanding that if it's not relevant to the neighborhood, it's really not part of the process.
Yeah, I mean, the main component of, of granting a liquor license is the needs and desires of the city.
Of the neighborhood.
Yeah, you can ask these other questions, but they have to go to the good moral character of, of the applicant.
Right, I mean, if I ask, are you familiar with Colorado liquor code? And she says no, it's irrelevant.
It doesn't go to her good moral character, correct.
It's irrelevant, so.
I'd still like to know, Debbie, are you familiar with the Colorado liquor code?
To repeat it now, to no, I'm going to say no, because you're confusing me and, you know, you have to be 21, we have to be 21 to serve it. I'm not serving a lot of anything to have, I guess no. I don't know what you want me to do.
Answer truthfully, that's what we want.
Yeah, that's part of your good moral character.
I said I will have all employees go to whatever you want me to do, besides the common sense that everybody knows up there. I do not know straight liquor laws.
Cindy, is there some resources to help this brand-new business owner who's tried to open up their business during COVID? I know having this liquor license is important for the viability of their business, but to just to kind of help, help them through these tough times considering what we've been through in 2020.
I think the best training is the tips training. That's, and I'm pretty sure it's all done online anymore, that each individual can easily know that it helps you with what to do, what not to do, and how you're able to do it.
So could you hear that, Debbie, that the tips training is online? Each individual that you and your employees that would be serving can take that and have that training? And I would just highly recommend that you do that.
I could do that. I would just need to know where I find this at.
I will send it to you. I will send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
And I would just say, Debbie, the, the, if, if I was opening a business, serving liquor, one of the first things that I would want to understand are the rules of the game, you know, how things can go wrong, what my obligations as an owner are, so that I could, so that I could make sure that I can take all the necessary precautions and steps to maintain my liquor license. That, that's, that's what I would do, and, and so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, I guess my response back to that is I am not a bar. I do not perceive to be a bar. I'm expecting to give maybe two drinks while you eat dinner, not stay here all night and drink all night. And I do close at 9:00 PM to where they're not here all night long drinking.
Yes, yes, ma'am, I understand. And, and whether, whether you're a bar or not, I think my, my comments still stand. It is important for you to make sure that, if you can, understand the, the state liquor code and what, what obligations you may have under it.
I'm willing to do what I need to do, yes. I just didn't see that as something I needed to have done as homework for tonight's conversation.
Sure. And councilmember Dennehy.
Hi Debbie, this is Tim Dennehy. I'm just going to kind of follow what John was saying there. Get a copy of the Colorado liquor code. I know you're not looking to be a bar and that, but it is extremely important. This is one asset that I have done a lot in my career. It is so important to know this, even though you think you're only going to do a few drinks, but boy, if you get that one, two, you know, people that have, you know, three or four or five, and all of a sudden you, you get a violation on you, it's so important to just understand all of it. And I want to see you get this. I wish you nothing but the best with your business and, but get a copy of that Colorado liquor code. It's very, very easy to obtain. You can get it online and, you know, get a copy of that, but I don't know if we, if we need to vote on, but, but I, I know that I want to see your, and I understand why you want this, and I, and I just want to see your business succeed.
Okay, I will definitely get a copy of that and read it tonight. I just had no idea I had to have done that for today, or it would have been done.
It's really tough to come before council, and so we appreciate where you're standing at. It's, it's a tough crowd, but it's an important crowd, to ensure the safety. We have councilmember Gonzalez.
So I, I think Debbie, you have showed us that, that you do have good moral character, and I really feel like you will take this seriously moving forward. But I want to know, how as a city, could we have helped her better prepare for this meeting tonight, knowing that these questions were going to come up?
I think part of it is that stuff that we I think part of it is that stuff that we were given was three months ago, three and a half months ago, and we sat down and talked about this. And unfortunately, at the time, doing everything via email, I think some things were lost and or confused in the getting everything ready for the last minute of them opening others.
Sure, okay. I just, I feel.
I should have done a re, I didn't think about the amount of time, and that's my fault. I should have given her a refresh right before. It didn't even cross my mind.
Okay, I'm, I, I just, go ahead.
Councilwoman Gonzalez, I, I think, uh, you know, we can also look at updating the liquor license application so it's relevant to the questions that are being asked and making sure that it's, it's relevant to the good moral char, character thresholds that they have to meet. So we, we can commit to making those changes and updating that as well.
Thank you. That was my next comment.
That's a really good point. I appreciate that. Um, Councilmember Meisner.
I want to reiterate with clarification from the attorney that you can ask all the questions you want, but you can't use the answers to any of those questions to deny her a license. So you're kind of wasting your time in terms of asking her those questions if it doesn't have to do with moral character or the requirements of the neighborhood.
There's some accountability tied to that, too.
But you're, you can inquire about these things. You're right. But you, if she doesn't have, remember how it used to ask if they had a copy of the liquor code at the establishment? So you couldn't deny the license on that. And so we've shifted your questions to the needs and desires and good moral character because those are the items that you really need to investigate. That doesn't mean you can't say, how are you gonna train your employees? I just want to make sure that you're aware of this potential liquor license holder, that you need to train your employees. You need to go to tips. You need to be aware of what the liquor code requires. You can still say that to the applicant, you just can't deny. So you're right. But you don't have to ask those questions either if you don't want to.
Councilmember Reed.
I just want to go back on it a little bit and say, I mean, I think this is an opportunity for all of us as council to see that there is an opportunity here for us to do better. Um, I believe that Debbie has great moral character and she's running a fine establishment so far. Um, and so I have no issue with the liquor license portion, but I think we could have made this meeting a lot less stressful for her and a lot clearer for us by maybe having some sort of a published help guide, um, maybe some tips and tricks on how to obtain a liquor license with the city, just some information like that. So it could have all been together, what to expect when you go before a city council for your liquor license hearing. Just some very, um, bullet points, piece by piece. Um, I think that this is an opportunity that maybe we should explore that to see. So the next person doesn't have to go through all of the stress that Debbie has to go through right now, approaching us and all of us deciding what we need, so.
Are there any other comments or questions from council? Then I would like.
If I can, Madam Mayor, just for the record, um, you have a needs and petitions, or a needs and desires petition in your packet, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that satisfactory to council?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
What's the numbers on that petition?
Do you have any questions about that for the applicant?
Fifty-one signatures inside city limits.
How much?
Fifty-one.
No, it was 121. If you look, they were done at two different times.
Oh. Thank you.
Yes, we, and we took those, these takes all those off. Um, but it was, we had a lot of people sign that were out of city limits. We gave her a copy of the city limits guide, which helped us get people back into city limits. Because a lot of people, just because their address says Canyon City, they think they're in city limits.
I would like to close this public hearing. I would like to ask for a motion and a second to approve the liquor license for Lost Cajun.
I would like to make a motion, Madam Mayor, to approve the new liquor license hotel and restaurant for the Lost Cajun restaurant tonight on eight, three, twenty, twenty.
A second. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
I'm, I'm, I'm sure this lady's gonna do everything she needs, but I hate to go on with something that's full of no's even though she's gonna do stuff. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no. I wish you all the luck in the world. You got a good place out there. But I just don't feel comfortable granting it with no's to the law enforcement, no's to this, no the training. So I'm, I'm voting no because of that, not for any other reason.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, congratulations, Debra. And we look forward to, um, hearing more from you. And it sounds like Cindy will get you the, the link to the tips training for you and your employees. And we'll see you at the Lost Cajun soon. We'll now move forward, um, to number 11 on the agenda. A, Black Hills Franchise, the ballot language. This is the first reading on ordinance 14, series of 2020. Um, we'll go ahead and start with Ryan Stevens for the.
Actually, Madam Mayor, we need to reverse those, I believe. Uh, franchise agreement, item B actually needs to come first. Um, and that's ordinance number 13.
Because once we decide on B, we're already deciding on A.
So we will do item B, the Black Hills franchise agreement. And that's the first reading on ordinance 13, series of 2020. And this is the language in the franchise agreement itself. And then, um, Ryan Stevens, can you go ahead and give us a report?
Yeah, so, uh, the franchise agreement is something that, uh, Mayor Protem Hamrick and former councilmember Caitlin Turner worked on very diligently, uh, with, uh, Black Hills to come up with this, uh, new franchise agreement. Uh, I know there was a lot of, uh, input from uh, citizens and Canyon City's energy future that was taken into account while, uh, drafting and designing, uh, this franchise agreement. And, uh, this is a shorter franchise term. It's, it's 10 years, uh, as opposed to 20 years. And then I, you know, I also want to point out that, uh, you know, this is a non-exclusive franchise, and it does not inhibit the city's ability to explore municipal utility in the future if it so desires or if council desires at that point.
Um, I'd like to turn some time over, first of all, to Mayor Protem Hamrick because you have spent considerable time. And I want to acknowledge that and thank you for that in your research, not, and not just in creating the Black Hills franchise agreement with the attorneys with Canyon City Energy Futures, but you've attended quite a few meetings and trainings and met with a number of officials and utility organizations. You're kind of our in-house expert right now.
Uh, the, of course, the definition of an expert is it has been drip under pressure, so, you know, the.
There's been a lot of pressure on this one.
Lot of pressure on this one. The, I, I have attended a lot of meetings. I attended all of the, uh, Pueblo Energy, Energy Future meetings, uh, that I, that I could. I did meet with, uh, utilities. I did meet with representatives of wholesale power. Uh, we did consult with our, um, attorneys that, that specialize in electric franchises and electric, um, Public Utility Commission matters here in Colorado. I did receive quite an education in all of those matters. Uh, we did, um, Caitlin and I, uh, meet with Canyon City Energy Futures several times during this process. Um, and they did appear in front of us, um, the, uh, in council where we all got to hear from them and their concerns. Uh, they continue to have some concerns about the term, uh, and, and from just a, a purely parochial approach, uh, a self-interest type thing. All the brain damage that we went through, uh, to, um, get this con, this, uh, draft franchise negotiated, um, is, is probably more appropriate every 10 years or longer, uh, depending on conditions. But five years is, is, um, is almost shooting yourself in the foot, uh, if you, if you try to go back and, and renegotiate every five years. So we did stick with the 10 years. We do not have control over, uh, the rates, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that Black Hills, uh, charges. That is a public utilities commission authority. We do not have that authority. Um, there are other, there were other asks that, um, Canyon City Energy Futures made of us, uh, and at our last, the last time we discussed this. Those, those asks would have required us to reopen negotiations. Uh, and it's, and it's my belief that that would be counterproductive at this point, uh, reopening negotiations. We do have a, we'd have a franchise agreement, uh, that is, um, miles ahead of the one that we had previously. Uh, we have a lot of really good language in there about, uh, undergrounding utilities. Uh, undergrounded utilities, of course, are more reliable, uh, and also, um, take away one of the blight factors that you have, uh, for urban renewal authorities is if you have your power lines undergrounded. So, uh, the, all in all, I think that, and the other thing that we did, uh, listen to Canyon City, uh, Energy's future on is the, the original draft franchise language suggested, um, or, um, codified a 3% franchise fee for, um, that would be collected by Black Hills Energy and remitted to the city along with an additional 1% undergrounding utility fee that would be collected by Black Hills and held uh, in an interest-bearing account or in an account that Canyon City designated, uh, for undergrounding purposes. Um, that, that would be the only possible use of that money. Uh, and we did modify that. We, uh, are not seeking an increase of a franchise fee for, uh, residents in Canyon City. Uh, but the, we've, the, it's my belief that the, uh, issue of undergrounding is important enough. Uh, and we have such good language in our contract and our, uh, draft franchise, uh, covering that, that, um, we got together as a council and decided that we could live with a half a percent la, less. So rather than getting the full 3%, Canyon City will be getting 2.5% directly remitted to it uh, with the, um, 0.5% then being retained, uh, or the, uh, you know, uh, placed in an account at Canyon City's option, um, for undergrounding purposes.
Um, thank you, Mayor Protem Hamrick. Um, I'd also like to point out that based on the request of Canyon City Energy Futures, they also asked that we wait until after the Pueblo election to see how that went. And so we did so. And I think based on the results of that election and, um, some of the conversations coming from that is part of that decision-making to go, just go ahead and move forward with the Black Hills franchise agreement. And that, it's up to the people to decide from here. I'm Councilmember Meisner.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to, to thank John and Caitlin for all the time and effort and expertise that they put into the agreement. And second, just acknowledge again, we have no control over rates. We do not have the ability or opportunity at this point in time to kick Black Hills out of Canyon City and bring in a new vendor. Those are not options available to us. Uh, if, if you get to the point where you understand all that, then the agreement comes down to control on some things that, that I think we've done an extremely good job of controlling. And the big thing here is, is where do we stand with the undergrounding fee? And council, I think, made a concession there from a standpoint of reducing the amount of, taking that out of councils, which is the city's portion, and, and going from there. But I, but I thank John, I thank Caitlin, and I wish to control the rates so we had something to negotiate with, but it doesn't.
And I, I think it's important to point out that that fight about, um, rates and such, and maybe the fairness or the concept of a monopoly, um, of the public, and having to work with the Public Utilities Commission, that fight needs to be taken to the Public Utilities Commission. The franchise has absolutely no control or power over that.
And one, along those lines, Madam Mayor, one other additional point is we do have language in the franchise that, that did not exist before, uh, that requires Black Hills to notify us when they are going to seek a, uh, uh, rate increase. Now, they have made public statements that they're not going to be, uh, seeking rate increases for, I believe it's 10 years. Uh, and forgive me, John, if I get that wrong, but, uh, for some time in the future, they've, they've made the public commitment they're not going to, um, raise rates. But we do have the language in the draft franchise that requires them to notify us when they're going to be, uh, requesting, um, from the Public Utilities Commission, a rate increase.
Um, are there any comments from city council at this time? Then I will go ahead and turn some time over to, um, some of our public. And it's gonna be in order of the request to speak to council as it came in. And so we will start with Emily Tracy. Um, you each have three minutes. Um, you probably can't see the timer here um, in the chambers, but I will give you a 30-second warning when your time is about, is about up. So I'll turn our time over to Emily Tracy first, and then it'll be Carol Dunn.
Thanks. Uh, good evening, mayor, council, and staff. As you know, Canyon City's Energy Future was founded more than two and a half years ago to explore options for electricity service in the Canyon City area. We have met with electricity retail and wholesale providers such as Guzman Energy, which recently completed deals with the City of Fountain and with Delta Montreux Electric Association. I founded the group for two reasons. I wanted to work with Canyon City in finding ways to move more quickly to renewably produce electricity, and I was concerned about the high cost of power in Canyon City. I want to make two points. First, Black Hills has one of the highest costs for power in Colorado. I have homes in Canyon City and Breckenridge. Breckenridge is served by Excel Energy. Over a two-year period, I paid on average 77% more per kilowatt hour to Black Hills Energy for power than I paid to Excel. And as you probably know, Fremont County's average median household income is about 32% below the statewide average median household income. These high costs are very difficult for Canyon City residents and businesses. This is a core economic development issue. The cost of our power is too high for some kinds of businesses to succeed here. We understand that the city does not and cannot set electric rates. We understand that. But through the franchise agreement process, you have the power to work with providers that would not only provide cheaper power, but would also work toward renewably produced power more quickly. Local control is also an issue. The Colorado Constitution guarantees special rights and protections for municipal utilities, including the right to provide electric service inside and outside municipal limits, protection from the General Assembly establishing regulatory control over municipal facilities, and special protection from the juris, specific protection from the jurisdiction of the Colorado Public Utilities Commission. And municipalization is not just for large cities like Colorado Springs and Fort Collins. Many small communities have done this. Dunison, Oak Creek, Julesburg, Lamar, Springfield, Holly, for example. We hope that you will seriously explore what it would take to municipalize electricity in Canyon City. We ask that on behalf of the people of this community.
Thank you, Emily. Um, I'll go to Carol Dunn next.
You're on mute, Carol.
Okay, I'll start over again. Thanks for having us tonight, city council and mayor. I'm glad, uh, that you have worked so hard to get this franchise where it is right now. But I still want you to consider the fact that, um, the public has not been completely informed about what has gone on. And in the day of COVID, I'm not sure how you're going to, uh, go about doing that. I just want to, say that in order to build consensus and acceptance of this franchise by the citizens of Canyon City, all the residents need to know what efforts have been made to negotiate the best franchise to allow for economic growth, the ability of families to pay for reliable utilities, and how we in this city look to the future of energy production. We need to have confidence in you guys as leaders, that you have used your ability to muster all your resources to make well-researched and well-thought-out solutions. And I appreciate you, uh, John and Cait, especially now that Caitlin's not with us anymore on council, that, uh, you did reach out to many of the meetings and the resources that you had. But without open two-way communications with various segments of the constituency, many creative ideas may have been lost. And going forward to the vote, Canyon City's Energy Future hopes that council and expects that council will explain the reasoning behind this franchise. this franchise. And in the future, I hope that you can see your way to go to PUC. You can, don't have a right to decide those rates, but you can go before PUC as a, as maybe nothing more than an onlooker in the audience, and just see how they're, what their thinking is, as far as Black Hills and other investor-owned utilities. I also hope that you give an opportunity to people who do not have access to Zoom or other ways of joining this admittedly unusual way we have to hold meetings. I hope that other residents will be able to comment by mail or email about the franchise. And I, I think I heard you say that now council regular meetings are being broadcast on public access, because that hasn't been true in the last couple of times I've tried to find it. So, I do appreciate you listening to Canyon City's Energy Future. We will continue to work with you to hopefully get these rates down, the bills down. That's what's important to people in Canyon City, is how much actual money they're paying for their util, their electric utility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol. Councilmember Gonzalez, do you have something you'd like to say?
I do. Thank you, ladies. I, I, I learned a lot from you in your presentations and having sit-down one-on-one conversations with you. But I, I also want to let you know that many of us on council, and in the previous council, had met with other utility entities, and it just wasn't viable for us to make that switch right now. And I want to remind you, the reason that we went to a 10-year rather than a 20-year agreement is to explore other opportunities and allow the time to explore these other opportunities so that we don't just put this to bed. In organizing a new utility in our, in our area would take a lot of time and a lot of money. And I, I just want to remind you that that's, that's the progression that we're trying to get to. We're not putting this to bed. You know, this is something that we want to keep working towards. We just couldn't make it happen right now. Thank you.
We will now hear from Jerry Frye. You also have three minutes, and I'll give you a 30-minute, 30-second warning, and then Andrea Stein will come after you. So, Jerry Frye?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and as we're all being COVID careful, everyone in Zoom and council chambers. I have two items that I would like to bring forward, but one of them is what it's like to have been a business owner under Black Hills Energy. And the second is a discussion further of the 1% franchise fee for undergrounding. I was going to do those in that order, but I'm going to hit the undergrounding first, because we appreciate the removal of the proposed additional 1% franchise fee for undergrounding of utilities. However, what's the point of allowing Black Hills to retain a half a percent of the 3% franchise fee for future undergrounding? How much will that be each year? Approximately $83,000? How long will it be before the funds that Black Hills would accumulate from this would actually be used for undergrounding, even in just one block of overhead wires? Fortunately, the Colorado Constitution does guarantee special rights and protections for cities that are wanting local control. Whenever the city wants to do something, they usually put it out to bid. I would like to see this issue put out to bid. I do understand that it's a much more involved process, but I think that playing only in the franchise sandbox with Black Hills Energy is not giving very many options to Canyon City as far as the cost of power. If you look, any of you pull out your Black Hills Energy bill, and look at the item, items on the back that total up to the bottom line of what you pay each month, there are, for me, there were at Cup and Cone, 15 different lines. And though rates maybe can't be changed or influenced much by our city council directly, there's a lot of playground in there for Black Hills Energy to up the charges. And as I, I, I'd like to step back now and just give you a perspective of the impact on my business. As you know, I sold Cup and Cone. Who sells a business during the pandemic? Oh, my goodness. But that means that the $5,000 that I collected each year for city sales tax won't be coming from me. Hopefully, the new owner will be able to make that and more. But when I opened in 2012, I had a budget, and I was surprised by a $1,000 deposit.
I'm sorry, Jerry.
And that new business, I'm sorry?
So, I'm sorry, you've exceeded your three-minute time limit. But we are well aware that, of the burden of your, of your energy bill at Cup and Cone. And thank you for your comments today. Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Yes, just a couple of things. I would recommend that, that, you know, the, I don't know if there can be a franchise for Dummies written, because it's so complicated. There are so many interrelated factors. But, but the, on, on the undergrounding fund, that is a fund maintained either by Black Hills or the city at its option, the city's option. The Black Hills can advance us the money needed for a particular undergrounding fund. That's one of the disadvantages of having a 10-year term, rather than, it's actually a 25-year term, is what the previous term was. That's one of the disadvantages to having a 10-year term, because if you have a 25-year term, then you have 25 years of undergrounding fund accumulation that can be used for projects, that can be advanced by Black Hills to Canyon City. And then essentially, they pay themselves back through the, through the undergrounding fee. But because we only have 10 years, that is the, that is the timeframe that Black Hills can advance us undergrounding monies for projects. So, in essence, they're making an interest-free loan to the city, if that were to happen. The other thing is, is that, you know, we, we were advised by our attorneys on the issue of out to bid, and there's, the, the obstacle there is the certificate of public necessity that Black Hills maintains. They, in essence, pretty much have to, you know, fail in, in providing electricity to Canyon City for that to be revoked. And that's a necessary condition for us to bid out, you know, and try and get another electric provider in here. The, the court costs for that alone are in, are in the multimillion-dollar range. And if we were to spend $10 million on attorney's fees and court costs, that would all have to be paid for by somebody. And so, the, you know, considering all those factors, the, the out-to-bid option is really off the table for us also. Thank you.
I will now turn the time over to Andrea Stein. Andrea, you also have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I really appreciate you giving us the time tonight. And I have very few comments. I would like to say that in the current state of technology in energy, 10 years is a long time. The City of Pueblo has another decision point in five years. And the, the electric utility industry is changing rapidly. Renewables are now cheaper than fossil fuels, including natural gas. And we need flexibility to pursue the best deal for the people and businesses of Canyon City. And I also have a question for council. I know you're all assuming that everyone's going to vote for this proposal, and then it's, it's going to be easy to move on. I just want to know what your Plan B is if the citizens of Canyon City vote this down. Do any of you have any ideas what Plan B might be? Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, you know, if, if the franchise was voted down, the city would need to understand what it was the, the citizens were voting down. You know, the, the franchise does give many powers and authorities to the city in the regulation of Black Hills within our city borders. You know, it, if it's a, if it's something that we can control, and we can find that out, you know, post-election, then that's something that's possibly could be cured. But if it's just a general dissatisfaction with Black Hills and high rates, there's not much we can do, except to perhaps try and simplify the, the franchise, which is not necessarily a good thing. That would be a, that would be a, excuse me, that would, that would be a, that would be a step backward, in my view. And we have a pretty, we have a pretty good draft franchise right now. We hope that the citizens will be able to realize that and be able to see their way to approve it.
And I, just speaking for myself, Andrea, I don't have any preconceived notions on how the voters will or will not vote for this. I just know that we need to take it to the voters and move on to the next, whatever that, whether it's a yes or a no, we need to...
Okay, so I, I want to make sure I understand. So, what Mayor Protem Hamrick said, is Plan B is also Black Hills? I'm, I'm confused.
Because if we do not have a franchise, Black Hills is not bound by any contract between us and their behavior in our city. That's what a franchise does for a city. It puts bounds and limits and checks and balances on a public utility, on a, on a utility that is providing electricity within, within the municipality. And so, the, if we, if the franchise is voted down, and we do nothing, Black Hills will be our energy provider into the future, and we have no way to change that.
Andrea, do you have, you have just a few seconds left in your time. Do you want any final comments?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, so, we're going, whether, no matter what the people of Canyon City vote, we're going on with Black Hills. Is that what, I'm, that's what I'm hearing. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. That's, well, so it seems like we shouldn't even bother to vote. That doesn't make any sense to me. But I'm, you know, I'm just a country girl. Maybe I don't understand it. But thank you for your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Andrea. Councilmember Meisner?
Not that I can do it a any better job than John could, but if the franchise agreement is approved, we essentially ensure that the city is going to get some revenue for the franchise agreement, and we're going to have some degree of control over the items that are in the agreement. If the agreement does not pass, the question about whether Black Hills has to pay the franchise fee becomes a question, and how long Black Hills stays here becomes a question. So, there's a lot of things that come up in the air if the agreement is not approved. But just because the agreement is not approved, doesn't mean that Black Hills gets kicked out of the city. That will not happen.
Yeah, but it also doesn't mean that we can't have future conversations based on the election of what is best for Canyon City in the future. Yeah.
Madam?
I'm sorry, sorry, but you don't have the table right now. We do have another citizen's request to speak to council, and that is John V. Hill from Black Hills. John, you will also have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, and members of council. I'm here before you today just to, to say thank you for the work that Councilman Hamrick and Councilman, former Councilman Turner have done on behalf of the city to negotiate this agreement. I think that you have hit the nail on the head when you've talked about this agreement. A length of 10 years is relatively short in that by the time you get it approved by the PUC and in place, five years you would be negotiating about every two and a half, but three years would be my guess. And so, it's an appropriate time. 10 years is an appropriate time. And it's, it also, I think you did a great job of explaining this franchise. It's an operating agreement. It's, it's an understanding between the city and Black Hills Energy. And you tell us, it tells you that you have rights to tell us how to engineer certain things when we tear up streets, or when we move lines. And so, it gives the city some control over those sorts of things. But most importantly, this idea of undergrounding is an idea that, that council and the city of Canyon City is interested in. And I believe this gives you an opportunity, an opportunity to see if it's, if it's a priority for your community. With, with no additional cost to the taxpayer, the city council has dedicated a half percent of the franchise fee to undergrounding lines to improve reliability and to help beautify the city. And you're right, Councilman Hamrick, in the event that, you know, I know that we're collecting about $70,000, or $7,000 a month in terms of a franchise fee at that half percent rate. You get up to three years of advancement in that if you find a project that, that makes sense. And so, it does give the city some flexibility, and, and allows you 10 years from now to decide whether or not you want to continue that. I do want to say, just hearing the comments, believe me, we hear loud and clear that renewable energy, reliability, and rate stability has been really the priorities for our customers. And I'm, I'm proud to say that we have reliability that ranks in the top 25% nationwide. And so, that means that our customers suffer about an hour of outage every year. Now, that does have some changes when it comes to weather patterns and otherwise. There's some, some things that allow us to take out of that number. But essentially, you have pretty substantially reliable service today. From a rates perspective, you may have heard about the renewable advantage plan that we have in front of the PUC right now. That plan is to add 200 megawatts of solar energy onto our system, and the sole purpose for that project
Okay, John, I'm sorry.
is to deliver, yes?
Sorry, John, your time is up.
Yes? Oh, oh, my time is up. I apologize.
Your three minutes went fast. And we, just like, we thank the Canyon City Energy Futures. We appreciate having Black Hills representation here. Are there any questions from council members for any of these panelists, or comments in general that you would like to make? Councilmember Meisner?
The one hour that you talked about per year, is that based upon your whole Black Hills Energy area that you're serving, or is it only based upon the Canyon City area?
Oh, you're on mute.
Thank you. Councilmember Meisner, thank you for the question. That is territory-wide. That is not specific to Canyon City. That number represents our territory.
Yeah, that, that, you need to have a, a number that's relative to Canyon City, not your entire area, because that would get diminished. Madam Mayor?
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
That, that triggered a small thought in my head here. One of the things that we did get put into the draft franchise agreement is, is a metric that Black Hills would, because of the, because of the complexities of the system, sometimes you have electric lines that start in the city and end up in the county. And so, if you're looking at the reliability of that line, it's, it becomes difficult to parcel that out between the two entities. Because of that, we took, we took, you know, we recognize that fact, but Black Hills did commit to provide us a metric of reliability to the best that they could, considering some of the difficulties about reliable service in the franchise.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
So, my question goes back to the ballot language, because...
So, um, my question goes back to the ballot language, um, because are we, we haven't talked about that yet, have we?
No, we're just talking about the agreement first.
Oh, did we?
We switched them.
We switched?
Mm-hmm.
Never mind.
Because we have to do the agreement first.
And the agreement and that, um, there's two that are in our packets. There's one that has the half percent going towards undergrounding. I'm assuming that's what city council would be moving forward on.
Yes, that's, one is a red line and so they're both, one is, um, you know, you can find the changes, the changed language easier in the red line and the others should just ref- reflect that language.
Um, any other discussion from city council about the Black Hat Hills franchise agreement? Um, I would just like to say in response to some comments, um, from Carol Dan about we know what efforts have been made and confidence in us as leaders and the two-way communication. I think most of us, the city council members, have sat down with Canyon City Energy Futures more than once, um, on eye-to-eye level and conversation level. We've had many public meetings over the past year and a half or so. And a lot of your comments that were given were very good and very, um, taken to heart as far as the agreement itself and appreciate your input on that so that we could have a more robust franchise agreement and, um, much, much more accountability in this, um, ten-year agreement than we had in the, just kind of the one-pager practically of the twenty-five-year one. This is way more robust and a lot more accountability to Black Hills. And you guys were a really important part of that. And so I, I do feel like we have gotten a lot of input from Canyon City Energy Futures. And as, um, mayor and I believe city council members too, out of the interest of our, um, of our public and their consternation of our high rates, that if we are notified by Black Hills that they are going to the PUC to raise rates, we absolutely, we will be at PUC. Um, that is a commitment I'm willing to make, to make sure that we represent Canyon City and those rate increases that could happen. And that the public, I know it's hard to talk, um, and communicate via Zoom. It is COVID, um, required, but we are able to communicate via email, um, phone calls, Facebook or any other, or, or face-to-face as too if citizens need to speak to us as council members. As mayor, we are accessible to our public and their concerns and needs.
That's mask to mask, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, mask to mask. That's right. Um, any other discussion from city council? Then I'd like to ask for a vote or a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah. Mayor Protem Hamrick, I think, yeah, you do need to do this. You worked really hard.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve ordinance thirteen, series of 2020, uh, an ordinance granting Black Hills a, um, non-exclusive elective, electric franchise on first reading.
With which version?
It, they're both the same. One is a, one is a-
One's just a clean version of the red line copy. The red line was just provided for you so you could find the changes more easily.
It's the ballot language that has two versions.
Right.
It's the ballot language that has two.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Then I'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
Um, the, the motion has carried for the language of the franchise agreement. However, that agreement does need to go before the voters to be approved. And that is what we will do next, is approve the ballot language. And that that is on first reading on ordinance fourteen, series of 2020. There are two versions of that. Um, I would recommend we start our discussion on the one that has the half percent that goes towards undergrounding out of that three percent and would ask for a report from Ryan Stevens.
Yeah, so I, I just want to be clear, uh, for, for council. The agreements are the same. It's ju- it's just a matter of how it's going to be presented on the ballot. So you, you have alternative one, which references the three percent franchise fee with a half percent going towards undergrounding. And you have alternative two, which does not mention the franchise fee at all. So that, uh, that would be for discussion to council at this time.
Oh, thank you for that clarification. Do you have any other reports you want to give about the ballot language?
That's all I have at this moment.
No, it's really up to council's preference, um, with the ballot language. But I do want to mention one thing. Um, when you pass the franchise, if you pass the franchise on second reading, it's going to be published in full in the newspaper. Of course, we can put it up on social media, but it, it will be published in full for the public to read once it's passed on second reading. But it will not be on the ballot itself, just to clarify that. Like that, the ordinance for the franchise agreement will not be on the ballot. Just this question.
Okay. So let's hear from council. Um, Councilwoman Gonzalez?
So, um, I, I guess I didn't really, wh- when, um, Andrea asked the question about what's the backup plan, um, it kind of surprised me that she didn't understand that Black Hills is our only option. The matter that we're voting on, um, a franchise agreement or not has not been made publicly aware, apparently. So, um, with, with this ballot, um, language needs to come along, the lang- the, the education piece that goes out to the public. Um-
Right. So you have to be careful now because you're subject to the Fair Campaign Practices Act. So you can't expend city bucks, money to do so. But I would suggest that maybe at your next meeting or whenever you want, because it's going to be the November third election. So whenever you feel like it's appropriate, that you do bring a resolution before council, yeah, presumably in support of passing the franchise. And you can lay out in that resolution all the information that you think is important. And of course, you guys can also spend your free time talking to people.
Okay. Um, is there a way to put in the, in the ballot language to vote either for or against about, uh, a franchise agreement?
Well, that's what it does.
That's what it will do.
So it references the ordinance that contains the, the actual agreement language that you just voted on?
Councilmember Meisner?
So if we chose the option that does not mention the undergrounding fee, does the undergrounding fee go away?
No.
Okay.
The ballot language does not change the language in the agreement itself.
Right, because we already set that.
Correct.
But when you go back to the agreement, then it doesn't designate how that, how that, how that, uh, grounding fee is determined, whether it is part of the three percent or part of the, or in addition, like it was before, to the three percent. It just mentions it. So could you, if you did the first option that does not mention the fee, uh, how would that fee get determined? Does Black Hills determine that? That, that it would be three and a half percent?
So perhaps, uh, unless you want to take that one?
Go ahead.
The, what the lang- the, the franchise has always, um, enumerated the three percent franchise fee. The old franchise did.
Right.
Our draft new franchise does. Uh, the undergrounding part of it, the, the language, I believe, in the draft franchise agreement makes it clear that of the three percent, point five percent is put into the undergrounding fund. Uh, and so the, it, it specifies the fee, three percent, and it specifies that of that three percent, point five percent is put into an undergrounding fund.
It's in the section seven A, not in the undergrounding section where it delineates the two-point-five and the point five.
Section what?
Uh, seven A in the agreement.
Page four.
Page.
And so we have already approved the language of the agreement, but we're-
Right.
What we are deciding now is which ballot language we are going to pass on first reading.
Right. And I, I think the question is, do you think it's important that the voters see the franchise fee and the undergrounding fee as part of the question or not? The lack of it being there does not change that structure. It's just what you think the voters should see when they ask the question.
Um-
Okay.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
I, I just said for the sake of transparency, I would, I would prefer that it was in there.
Um, Mayor Protem Hamrick?
I would, the, my thoughts are that, that simpler is better. There's a lot of granularity in the, in the franchise that we could try to shoehorn into the ballot language that would really not be appropriate. I think, I think simple, you know, cleaner is better is my view.
So no?
So, so I would say option two.
Okay.
Councilmember Meisner?
Uh, I understand both of your positions, but I, I side with John only from the standpoint that if I'm opposed to the grounding fee and I read the first version, I may say, I don't want to do the grounding fee and I vote no. And in reality, we have no control over the grounding fee because we've set that in the agreement. So if they're interested in the grounding fee, they need to go to the agreement and read it and understand it, just as any other issue that you vote on. But I think by having it in the first option, some voters could look at that and say, I don't want the grounding fee, no. And that they, it's not that they wasted their vote, but they voted for the wrong thing. Am I saying that right, John?
Um, any other opinions from council for option A versus B or one versus two?
Alternative one or two. Let's get it going.
Um, Councilmember Reed?
So I agree with what Dolly was saying too, but I do also think ballot language is always a little bit confusing. That's why we have to send books. And so I do think that it is kind of giving an illusion that that's what they're voting against when really and truly it's part of any way, if I'm understanding it correctly. Um, so I'm thinking option two as well.
Um, should we go ahead and have a motion for option two and see how it, it goes?
John votes here.
Go ahead.
This is your bait.
Councilmember, Mayor Protem Hamrick?
For, for good or for ill?
For ill.
Uh, the, so, um, mayor and council, I, I move that we adopt the language in alternative two for the ballot concerning the Black Hills, um, non-exclusive franchise.
Ordinance fourteen.
So there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gonzalez?
So what was the reasoning, um, for putting, I, I was at the meeting, but what was the reasoning for putting the, the franchise fee with the undergrounding in it?
I think we wanted to provide options for council. Um, you know, uh, you, for alternative one, uh, if, you know, if council felt that the, the public did want to see undergrounding as part of it, um, and, you know, that's an opportunity to inform the public that there is undergrounding. Uh, of course, option two, as Councilman Hamrick, Mayor Protem Hamrick, uh, mentioned, um, you know, simpler may, may be better and may be less confusing. So that's why we wanted to put two options so council could discuss in open session and, uh, you know, make it, make a selection.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from council? Then I'll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
We're voting on option two.
Yes.
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
John votes now.
You changed my mind.
I did?
Um, the motion has passed. This is on first reading. There will be a second reading in two weeks from today. If there's other citizens that wish to address council, please contact, um, our clerk, Cindy Foster Owens, and she will make sure you're on the agenda and become a panelist on the Zoom meeting. Um, right now, it is time to move on to number twelve, moving into an executive session. I'll turn that time over to Councilmember Meisner.
Mayor and council, I move the, I move that city council enter an executive session for the purposes to consider personnel matters pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four F and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session specifically for the evaluation of the city administrator.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
I will now move into executive session.